Good evening and welcome to the July 11, 2016 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one item on our agenda. It is a presentation and discussion of the potential uses of the Housing Initiative Fund, and I'm going to turn it over to John Schlichting, who wants to open this up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to let you know that as of July 1, which is the beginning of our fiscal year, the Housing and Community Development Division, which was formerly in the Finance Department, is now under the umbrella of the Planning Division, led by Marty Mattson, in the Department of Planning and Code. So I wanted to formally welcome Louise Kaufman and Lauren Sukel to the Department of Planning and Code. We have already seen some great synergies between planning staff and housing staff, and we hope that you will see those synergies tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Our presentation this evening will provide you and the public with the background and current status of the city's Housing Initiative Fund, and we'll introduce five options for the use of these funds.
Great. And I'd like to say to the people with me in the dais that if we can go through the presentation first, and then at the end, we'll get to the questions. That would be great, because we have a lot around to cover.
That's our preference, so thank you. This $3 million fund was established with an initial payment of $1.2 million in 2012 by the owners of Crown Farm to increase and preserve affordable housing for residents with incomes at or below 100% of area median income, currently about $108,000. In June 2015, the city received Crown's final $600,000 contribution. At the request of Montgomery Housing Partnership, a local nonprofit developer, the city and county each issued below-market loans to assist with the acquisition and renovation of two small multifamily apartment complexes at 439 and 425 North Frederick Avenue. The council approved these loans as a way to meet several meaningful objectives: to serve a low- and moderate-income population, as half the residents must have incomes at or below 60% of AMI, which is approximately $65,000 a year, and to hold rent increases to the county-recommended guidelines in 2016, 2.1%. In the event of a redevelopment, MHB has also pledged to provide a minimum of 77 MPDUs to replace the loss of existing units if that number meets with the council's approval. MHB is currently negotiating to purchase the middle property located at 431 North Frederick Avenue as part of a potential redevelopment of the five-acre site. An assemblage that meets the city's long-term objectives along the 355 corridor is a good example of the community development partnerships we propose as one option for housing initiative funds. All principal and unpaid interest is due on the 1st of January 2020, and if not paid before that date, the amount of interest due will be almost $90,000, which of course will return to the Housing Initiative Fund, along with the outstanding $736,000 principal. Following a surge of applications in early fiscal year 2015, staff understood there would not be sufficient city funds to meet the anticipated demand for the remainder of the fiscal year, and the council approved using housing initiative funds to supplement federal CDBG dollars. By the end of the fiscal year, 43 loans, including 19 for MPDU and workforce housing units, were issued to qualified homebuyers, three and a half times the number of loans from the previous year. To further extend the program availability, individual loan amounts were reduced from $20,000 to $15,000. With these loans still outstanding, the fund has a current balance of $2.1 million. Since FY '16, the strategic plan has contained a separate direction for housing, which envisions that the city maintain comprehensive housing policies and programs that provide fair, affordable options in homeownership and rental opportunities. The options before you this evening align directly with these key strategies, as they were designed to address the need for greater affordability in both homeownership and rental housing. Staff is recommending these options for the use of the housing initiative funds. They are loans to community developers, loans to residential property owners, grants for rental assistance, augmented Gaup loans, and finally, small grants to common ownership communities in the city. Our first recommendation offers loans to housing developers in exchange for increased affordable units in a new development or redevelopment project. As the council is aware, the MPDU ordinance established a minimum threshold of 15% for any residential construction with 20 or more units. Increasing that percentage or making other adjustments requires the flexibility to negotiate with developers and builders early in the review process. By doing so, the city can ensure an optimal mix of affordable and market-rate housing that reflects geographic and community needs and leverages outside dollars to maximize our investment. Moreover, in a tight rental housing market such as this, without federal, state, or local incentives, most developers choose to provide housing exclusively to higher-income households. These loans could be used to address a variety of code and infrastructure requirements. Examples include site remediation or demolition, utility improvement or relocation, stormwater mitigation, or accessibility upgrades. Although housing trust funds may differ in the range of income served, the vast majority we examined, both locally and throughout the country, use a portion of their dollars to invest in new residential developments, leveraging their own dollars through financial partnerships with nonprofit housing organizations and other investors. There is a new generation of social impact investors, in fact, who look for investments in housing as a way to address a variety of issues, including economic mobility and educational attainment. These networks operate as real estate investment trusts, focusing not only on a financial return, but who also have a strong social mission targeting the housing and service needs of lower-income residents. Using local funds rather than relying on federal or state resources gives the city more control over the level of affordability and other requirements that we might impose.
Okay, so our second option is to offer loans to property owners. Offering below-market loans to homeowners to improve or maintain their properties is another facet of this comprehensive approach to addressing affordability for low- and moderate-income residents. By focusing on energy efficiency and accessibility upgrades, these funds would have both immediate and long-term benefit to renters and owner occupants, including those who wish to age in place. As a well-resourced and carefully managed midsize city, Gaithersburg has the capacity to run big-city programs, yet we are still small enough to fine-tune policy to meet multiple objectives. This initiative is designed to create community engagement and environmental protection through resident investment. Actually, this option would be a mere extension of initiatives that Mayor and City Council have already championed. Loans to property owners would be modeled after the Gaithersburg Homebuyer Assistance Loan Program. Once in place, staff can shift gears to meet the changing needs of residents. 15% of Gaithersburg residents are over 60, and 24% are between 45 and 64. According to the AARP's Home and Community Preferences of the 45+ Population Report, 80% of those surveyed strongly agree that they would like to age in place for as long as possible. Additionally, veterans being discharged from local medical facilities are often unable to find affordable, accessible units that meet their physical needs. This program is holistic, which would give both populations more housing options. One such route is through energy efficiency upgrades that sizably reduce utility costs. We imagine a two-tiered approach that addresses issues facing both single- and multifamily property owners. Despite below-market rents in aging multifamily properties, the tenants' total housing costs are anything but affordable. Based on an analysis of utility assistance requests, a monthly utility cost of $350 is not unusual. There is a disconnect between incentives for property owners of multifamily units and their tenants who pay for their own utilities. Currently, the financial incentive for property owners are tax credits, which do not justify the cost of efficiency upgrades to their buildings. The city might consider a pilot agreement with a loan condition of rent stabilization to make this program successful for all parties. Residential, single-family property owners with incomes at or below 100% of AMI would also see an immediate reduction in utility costs. After the completion of a home energy audit, residents could apply for loans to cover anything from insulation in windows to the installation of a solar energy system. There is a significant long-term benefit to owning the solar panels. Solar panel owners' electricity costs actually go down to nearly zero over time. Furthermore, homes with solar panels have 3% to 4% higher property values than similar homes in the same area, and sell twice as fast as the competition, according to researchers at the Electricity Markets and Policy Group. Low- and moderate-income homeowners are more likely to be credit-constrained and less likely to have access to the upfront costs needed to purchase the system. Based on the information available, we best estimate the cost of a full installation of solar panels at around $15,000 to $20,000 in this area. The city would make accessible this range of benefits to residents by providing that upfront cost as a 0% repayable loan.
Our next recommendation is to offer grants for rental assistance that is paid directly to landlords. According to HUD's Policy Development and Research Division, nearly half of low-income renters in areas such as ours receive no housing subsidy. According to the 2010-2014 American Community Survey, more than 50% of Gaithersburg residents pay greater than 30% of their income to housing costs, and of that percentage, nearly a quarter, 24%, pay more than half their income to housing costs alone. From the ACS surveys for the five-year periods 2005 to 2009, and 2010 to 2014, the Gaithersburg median income actually declined by nearly 3% from $80,655 to $78,441, while during the same period, median rents increased by 13%, up to $15,040 a month. As you know, Gaithersburg has several strata of affordable housing types. They include unregulated or market-based affordable housing, federally assisted housing through Section 8 or the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, other state and local programs such as Diamond Square Apartments and the Oaks at Old Town, and of course, our own MPDU rental program. Unregulated affordable units, which are market-rate units generally located on the east side of Gaithersburg, seem like a good deal to prospective tenants. The rents are generally low, even below MPDU rents in many cases, and they are located in areas of the city with strong infrastructure and amenities already in place. On the other hand, utility costs in older properties can make overall housing costs, that is, rent and utilities combined, unaffordable. In the city, there are 33 multifamily rental properties built before the late 1980s. Those properties contain more than 5,000 units, representing nearly half of the city's rental housing stock. There are existing rental assistance programs targeted towards low-income leaseholders. Such programs utilize federal, state, and county resources, as well as faith-based and private nonprofit agencies. Unfortunately, these programs have long waiting lists and often provide short-term assistance or very shallow subsidies. What we envision is a long-term rental assistance program that preserves housing for city residents while the household is on another waiting list. By long term, we mean six to 12 months, with flexibility as to the monthly assistance. In some cases, that assistance wouldn't be more than $200 a month, while other households would need a greater amount. The city itself has actually provided a model for a housing assistance program, as Gaithersburg developed an employee-assisted housing stipend program in 2008, providing up to $300 a month to full-time city employees who live within the city limits. In the first year of the program, 14 employees received either a $200 or $300 stipend. In the fiscal year that just ended, 31 employees participated.
Another option is to augment Gaup funds. Staff also recognize the need to continue to support homeownership policies that encourage a more proportionate distribution of low- and moderate-income households throughout all neighborhoods in the city. Although we have to work within the realistic confines of the housing market in a very high-value area, staff feel if the city increases loan amounts for purchasers in neighborhoods with higher housing costs, it would be possible for more participants to buy in those areas. In combination with a few other adjustments, we feel that we can tweak the program to better meet this objective. In the last fiscal year, there were a greater number of fund reservations than the city had budgeted. For that reason, staff recommend a few small changes in order to serve the most buyers. Looking forward, staff intend to institute a 0% monthly repayment. We maintain regular contact with a core group of program lenders, and based on their feedback, staff determine that if the repayment amount is small, then the buyer's debt-to-income ratio at the time of underwriting will not be affected. Loans will be amortized over a relatively long period of time. Still, because of the volume of the loans we anticipate, the paybacks will start funding Gaup within several years. Recently, many programs, including Fannie Mae, have lowered their down payment requirements. Although closing costs remain high, these reduced down payments, as low as 3% in some cases, allow our dollars to go further, and may explain why reducing our loan amounts from $20,000 to $15,000, and then again to $10,000 in fiscal year '16, still works for qualified buyers in certain areas. Augmenting loan amounts for buyers in higher-cost neighborhoods, however, is necessary to assist with the higher closing costs that come with increased sales prices. It is safe to say that the Gaup program has been a winning formula. As you can see, huge growth has occurred over the last few years. The map on your left shows the 12 loans that were issued in fiscal year '14, and then there were 73 loans issued in '15 and '16. Upon our review of the new closing documents, low-interest rates translate into a reduction in total housing costs when going from renting to ownership. Since fiscal year '14, there have been 85 loans issued throughout the city. The majority of homebuyers using Gaup funds had incomes at or below 80% of AMI, and yet many were able to purchase in areas of the city with home values at or above the median value for Gaithersburg. Visualized another way, however, it is apparent that more work needs to be done to assist Gaup buyers to purchase outside of the traditionally affordable areas. Since the creation of Gaup and as a result of the MPDU ordinance, there has been a slight increase in housing affordable to moderate-income households in higher-cost neighborhoods. National studies confirm that the default and delinquency rate among participants in programs which require first-time homebuyer education, like Gaup, is about half that of nonparticipants. True to form, there has not been a single foreclosure since the program's inception in 2008. Based on this history of success, staff believe that an augment to Gaup funds can give an even greater number of buyers the opportunity to get into those higher-cost neighborhoods. We've confirmed with program lenders who issue the First Trust mortgages that an increase in the amount of the loan to up to $25,000 would make purchasing in the target neighborhoods a viable option, even for participants meeting program maximum income restrictions.
Our final recommendation this evening is to provide small grants to condominium common-ownership communities to increase the number of FHA-approved condominium associations, which would certainly translate into more buyers of this housing product, as we have learned from a number of qualified buyers looking to purchase condominiums as their first home. For those unfamiliar with FHA, the Federal Housing Administration is an agency of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, whose function is to provide mortgage insurance on loans made by approved lenders. In the event of owner default, FHA makes payment to the lender, thereby reducing that lender's risk. In the aftermath of the recent recession, during which there was a significant spike in foreclosures, FHA tightened its oversight of condominium associations throughout the country. The flexibility they had previously allowed, such as spot loans on individual units, was replaced by a much more stringent set of requirements, which includes evaluating existing FHA ratios in the community, the level of delinquencies at the property, the percentages of investor-owned units, and operating capital reserves, among other factors. In 2015, the number of FHA finance loans nationwide was fewer than 23,000, a steep decline from earlier years. According to those most knowledgeable, many properties that lost their approval several years ago have not reapplied due to the stringent recertification requirements. That is borne out by a review of COCs in the city, where many expiration dates go back as far as 2010 and 2011. Based on our review of the FHA website, which provides information on condominium associations' FHA status, of the more than 60 condominium associations in the city, 2/3 are not currently approved or are expiring this year. Properties lacking FHA approval are not limited to a particular zip code or geographic area in the city, but distributed throughout Gaithersburg and the county, in both high- and lower-cost housing. This is not an issue that affects only lower- or moderate-income homebuyers with poor credit. Young, first-time buyers, and seniors seeking a reverse mortgage look for FHA financing as part of their mortgage loan. Further, many conventional underwriters use similar criteria in evaluating loans, so this problem is truly not unique to FHA. Working with Neighborhood Services staff, we prepared a one-page survey designed to solicit feedback from COC property managers as to their eligibility for FHA approval. No surveys were completed or returned, and follow-up conversations initiated by staff gave the impression that this is not a high-priority issue for managers with whom we spoke. One respondent stated that although her property does not have FHA approval, as a fairly small community with little turnover, FHA approval is not a priority. Feedback from the council on this issue will help determine if the city should next approach the boards themselves directly. In the meantime, staff has reached out to other organizations to explore legislative, political, research, and advocacy efforts. City staff also participate in a regional committee that includes legislators, condominium associations, and county policymakers charged with finding solutions to this issue. There are a number of reasons to use outside consultants to assist with filing the required documents. FHA only grants two-year approvals, and there is a narrow window for that approval. An applicant cannot submit earlier than six months prior to expiration, and no more than six months after that. Otherwise, a full project approval will be required. We have also heard from Realtors that FHA makes errors in their reviews that prevent associations from being approved. Working with an experienced group or consultant can address those errors in a timely fashion. We believe that by issuing small grants to the boards, or for the city to contract directly with an entity experienced in the FHA application approval process, will result in a higher approval rate for Gaithersburg condominium associations, thereby increasing the supply of affordable homeownership housing throughout the city. Another component of assisting condominium communities might be to offer payment of some condo fees for households that meet CDBG eligibility requirements. This is an eligible CDBG public service expense, and using funds would be another tool to assist communities that are more likely to get FHA approval if their delinquency rates fall below 15%. However, we have not fully explored this possibility, nor have we marketed it to any communities. Lauren and I have outlined the five options listed above, of which three would be structured through low-interest or zero-interest loans. They include loans to increase affordable housing and new construction, giving the city some control over the placement and mix of housing types; second, loans to support residential owners' property upgrades, increasing home values while reducing energy costs; and focusing on seniors and persons with disabilities with loans for accessibility features; and third, offering increased loan amounts for buyers in higher-priced neighborhoods, which would further enhance the geographic distribution the council seeks. We recognize that this housing fund is a limited resource, and therefore offering loans must be an important consideration. Although grant funds do not return to the Housing Initiative Fund, we are nonetheless proposing two pilot grant programs: a designated fund to stabilize low-income households through direct rent assistance payments to landlords, and by offering small grants to assist condominium associations seeking FHA approval. This slide lists some of the questions we used as our criteria for determining our recommendations. Should the focus be on homeownership or rental properties? What is the importance of citywide distribution of affordable units? What is the importance of improving existing properties in established neighborhoods? Should the emphasis be on new development opportunities or redevelopment? And what role should economic development aspects play in the use of these funds? We believe that these five recommendations reflect a balance of policies promoting homeownership and improving the rental stock for low-income households, and also recognize the council's desire to increase affordable housing in areas where housing is long been out of the reach of moderate-income residents. We are also recommending policies that enhance property values and promote environmental sustainability in older neighborhoods, all important strategic objectives for the council. Although few options exist for new development, going forward, we believe there will be ample opportunities for redevelopment that meet the city's long-term objectives for both commercial and residential construction. Although some might argue otherwise, there's also ample evidence that affordable housing is good public policy for enhanced economic development. A household's single greatest expense is its housing cost. Unlike wealthier families who use their surplus income for savings and investments, lower-income families who have some discretionary income put that money back into their communities. Although the city has not itself undertaken any direct surveys, national surveys of business leaders report that insufficient affordable housing has a definite negative impact in attracting and retaining qualified entry-level and mid-level employees, and attribute some level of turnover to long commuting times for their employees. They are a much a concern in this area. Although property tax revenues are also increased, using housing initiative funds to construct and rehabilitate housing produce additional benefits by supporting local businesses, including construction contractors and local labors. We have presented our five options for the housing initiative funds, and are asking for guidance from the Mayor guidance from the mayor and council at this point.
Thank you very much, Louise, Lauren, Marty. Appreciate all the work that's clearly gone into coming up with these five options, and you know, it's no simple task to take everything that's been said at this dais and synthesize it into five legitimate policy recommendations. I'm going to start off and answer the question directly about the five options that you guys have presented. I'm really keen on three of them in particular, those being the loans to community developers, which gives us opportunity to stimulate and incentivize affordable units in parts of the city that maybe we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity for if we left it right up to the market. I'm in favor of the grants to common ownership communities in order to facilitate the FHA designation. I think that's a really, it's come up here before, you guys have brought it to our attention before. It's important, I think it's sort of a, it's, I see this sort of a bargain endeavor that we can, that could really go a long way with thin resources. And I would support more funding for our Gaithersburg homeownership assistance than G-Help, whatever it stands for, I forget, but the down payment assistance. The reason why I support these, these three over the others is because they serve to increase stock, they serve to help geographically balance where our affordable housing is, so we don't have one concentration of it, but we have it distributed throughout the city. And I think that they maximize the number of people that we can help given the limited resources we have. So that's where I am, and I'm interested to hear where Mike and Ryan are as well.
Well, I'll echo the comments of the mayor in thanking you all for very creative, I think, and thorough policy proposals. And obviously, you know, this is, we're in the midst of a conversation, nothing is going to get, you know, resolved tonight, but we're going to start really trying to focus in and direct on which of these policies we think make the most sense. But I do think, you know, echoing some of your comments in your presentation, you know, we can be proud of the fact that Gaithersburg has really, in many ways, been on the cutting edge of a lot of these affordable housing programs. I mean, many of the programs that you talked about and proposals that you talked about, as you said, are built on maybe more short term or small pilot projects that we have done in the past to gauge their effectiveness. And, you know, I think that's pretty telling, and you know, you ended your presentation by talking about some of the data that's out there that supports the notion that mixed income housing opportunities are good for economic development. And one of the nice things about working here in Gaithersburg is I think no one at the senior policy level challenges that notion, in fact, we all embrace it. So we certainly don't need to be sold, I think, on that notion, but I do think it's helpful for the public to hear some of that data to reinforce where our values are and why they are there for many reasons, but that's just one of the additional reasons why it's good to have mixed income housing opportunities. I'm struggling with this because I think there's certainly merit to all of these approaches. To me, I keep coming back to the fact that we have limited funds in this Housing Initiative Fund, and I want to try and leverage those funds as far as they will go to help as many people as we can. And I frankly am a little skeptical that we would be able to use those funds sufficiently to leverage them with community developers. Maybe I just don't know enough about how community developers operate, but if the entire fund is only $2 million right now, you know, and knowing how much it costs to do major development and redevelopment projects, I have trouble sort of envisioning how we're going to be able to leverage a portion of that $2 million to make a real big impact, but we might be. And I'm happy to be corrected on that front. I agree that with the mayor that the goal of geographically spreading out affordable housing opportunities a little bit more around the city makes sense, and so I think that augmenting the G-Help program makes sense the way that you all have proposed it. I do just want to sort of double and triple check with Lynn and others that, and you may have already done this, Lynn, that it's kosher for us to be sort of offering different amounts of loans in different geographic spots of the city. I mean, certainly, there's a rational basis for it. I just want to make sure it doesn't run up against any other types of legal impediments out there. And the grants to the common ownership communities, again, I agree with the mayor, I think that's small cost for potentially big impact. This is something that we have, you and I have discussed, Louise, a couple of times.
I reviewed all of our emails over the last two years.
Very good. Because this is a tricky issue that I've struggled with as well, and I think you hit the nail on the head when you said you reached out to property managers and for whom this is just not a priority, because I think they don't have as much of a stake in this issue. They're hired by their COC to run the day-to-day operation of the community, but they don't have the same kind of stake that an owner has when they're thinking long-term, what's the, you know, the value of my property going to be in five or 10 years when I want to sell it, and how many buyers out there are going to be able to fight over my property. And it seems to me that despite all of the bureaucratic problems at the local level and at the federal level with getting these approvals and these reapprovals, that it can be done if you do have a good professional consultant or someone to help you. So it seems to me that that's something that I think could really open up the door to opportunities for both buyers and sellers. And as you said, that's a problem that's sort of spread throughout the city at all income levels, all property values, so I think it could help a lot of folks as well. On the other two proposals, on the grants for rental assistance, I'm inclined to want to support some sort of program. The extent of it, I'm not really sure yet, I think we really have to kind of hammer out the details. I know that we've done in the last several years, emergency short-term rental assistance programs. You know, as much as we focus on increasing ownership in our discussion of housing, I do think we need to recognize the reality that there are a lot of folks who either choose to rent or for other reasons can't seriously consider homeownership. And as much as I think it is a laudable thing for us to try to encourage for folks, I think we need to sort of acknowledge the reality that we need to create programs that assist folks who are renting as well, and grow the programs that we have that assist folks who are renting. So I'd like to see something along that line. I also think the idea of, you know, energy efficiency upgrades, all of that is good. I'm not sure that the Housing Initiative Fund is the place for those programs, but I agree in principle with what those programs are trying to accomplish, and it's just sort of a question of prioritization. As much as I think it's a good idea, I think some of the other programs that you proposed would take a higher priority, in my personal view, if the core goal here really is to secure and expand affordable housing opportunities. So those are sort of my initial thoughts, I'm sure we'll continue the conversation, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the public has to say as well.
Before we get to you, Mike, I wanted to ask a couple of questions related to, or one question in particular related to what Ryan just said. In the loans to community developers, you guys specified that a minimum recommendation, minimum investment recommendation recommended for viability would be $250,000. How did you come up with that number?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
You know, this is one of the opportunities we see with housing community development coming under planning is getting involved in these discussions very early on. That amount, quite frankly, was just something we grabbed at. Councilman Spiegel was exactly right in that we don't exactly know how much and if we would even have enough to make a difference in some of these financing packages. However, we wanted the ability and we wanted to suggest having the ability so that when those developers come and do sit down with us, that we can start those conversations. What we're envisioning is that anything we proposed along those lines would be wrapped up in a development agreement and would come in front of council. And if, you know, we could envision something where $250,000 might make a difference, we could also envision something where we come to you and say, hey, this is a phenomenal deal, and this is going to make a huge difference, and we need all the money. We just don't know.
Right.
But, you know, obviously, that would be, you know, up to you folks to, you know, approve or not approve. What we are asking for in this presentation is just the direction to have that on the table and be able to start those conversations. You know, one example, you know, that we've all seen lately is the Y site, and in those negotiations for funding, frankly, we don't know if there might have been some ability to, you know, leverage some funds like this to retain some, you know, Gaithersburg control of how many units and, you know, how that project grew up. So that's one that, you know, we did have some conversations about some funding help. We're dealing with a couple others right now that, you know, we, you know, may be able to help out with some infrastructure, you know, type, you know, parts of those programs, and we just frankly don't know how much those might cost and what the payoff would be as far as above beyond that 15%.
Fair enough. Because when I, you know, I take Ryan's point about rental assistance well, I just, I'm in supporting the idea of exploring loans to community developers, that's where I would want to attack it, rather than having a separate rental assistance program, which I worry about the sustainability of that, having that laid out that way. But I think we're trying to get to the same place. Mike?
Yeah, thanks. So it's been about 10 years since we first started talking about this, Louise.
Wow.
And I'm actually, and I'm very proud of what the city's managed to do. I think the fact that we, for the first time 10 years ago, we looked at an affordable housing ordinance for the city that had none, in which we had the highest concentration of affordable rental units in the entire county. We still have the highest concentration of rental, affordable rental housing that is part of this issue that we're dealing with in terms of rental assistance. But I think, so to take off from where Ryan ended, I think it's important to increase our investment and the distribution and availability of affordable housing, whether it's rental or for ownership. But I think when we started talking about this in 2006, I made the case that the simplest and easiest and highest impact form of economic development for any municipal government is to, is homeownership, because the impact is immediate, both in terms of the tax base and in terms of the reinvestment of the dollars of those homeowners back into their property, into the city, and into their neighborhoods and communities. So I, and, you know, that is one of our strategic goals, is to have a greater than 50% percentage of homeownership throughout the city.
And we're currently at 55% homeownership.
And 55% is probably the right number going forward, and I think some of these things that we propose are going to help us sustain that. And so that gets back to the other issues. So the three things I think that are the most important are to get the biggest bang for the buck that we can, 2.1 million, hopefully with some interest payments from Montgomery Housing Partnership and some other deals, maybe we can boost that. I want to help the largest number of potential homeowners and renters as well. I think Ryan made the point, and it is a clear need, given the fact that we still have the highest density of affordable apartment, garden style apartments, the fact that most of those, many of those developments or residential areas are, have reached their useful life in terms of the structure of the building, the time and kind of construction, the garden style apartments, that's all changed now. But still, there are a lot of people that live in those units. And, you know, we looked at how we could help some of those residents in redevelopment, and I think we came up with some reasonable plans, but I think, as always, developers figure out ways to get out of that kind of assistance too, when they decide to redevelop and displace residents. So we're going to, I think we're going to have to go back and look at that. But then, I think the most important thing is whatever we do, we have to have a sustained impact. It can't last, I mean, it can't just be two or three years, it has to be five, 10, 20 years down the line, and so we have to look at inventory as well. So whatever we can do to increase the inventory of affordable units, whether it's rental or homeownership, is pretty important. So I think all of these ideas, which I would say, let's do all five, but we can't, I think we have to be realistic. I think, I agree with Ryan that some of the loans to residential property owners for energy improvements and other economies of scale, I think there are other programs that we can look to for some of that. It would certainly have a more immediate impact on the value of properties, et cetera, and improve neighborhoods. But I agree that augmenting the G-Help is pretty important. I think, you know, our first thing we did was to decide that it paid, it would be good for the city to have as many of its employees live in the city as we could. And so now we have about, apparently, 10% of our employees, a little over 10%, actually live either rent or own in the city. And so I think that we were investing in our people, and we knew in turn they would invest in the city. So I think that's pretty important. I think we can get an immediate impact in our grants to common ownership communities at a really variable cost from community to community. The concern I have there is I want the assurance that the properties are actually occupied by the owners and not held by investors. And if it's investors that own the majority of those properties, I don't, you know, I think that that community's going to have to make a case for why they need assistance.
Those currently, properties that have more than 50% invested owners are not eligible for FHA.
Okay, then, you know, that's part of it. I'd like to see, you know, almost a 0% ownership by investors. I think the people that have a stake and have the most to gain are people who actually live in those properties. And I think the fact that people feel they're comfortable, may feel they're comfortable because they realize the cost of housing and the cost of moving and the value that they have is probably not what it could be, so they're, they have a level of satisfaction for where they live now. So I think the other, the other issue is, you know, we can't do this alone, I'm sure we've already talked to a lot of stakeholders, but there are a lot of stakeholders involved here. I mean, current residents are currently stakeholders, are certainly stakeholders, and even current residents that have no particular interest or need for affordable housing, I think they have to, those residents and property owners understand that the value of their property is dependent on the value of the properties around them and the condition of them as well. So I don't think it's, you know, I remember when, you know, that in 2005, when I ran for office, I was surprised at the number of people that actually thought affordable housing for middle class, middle class and upper income was actually a pretty significant issue. And a lot of them were talking about the fact that their own children couldn't afford to come back and live in Gaithersburg. So they were moving to Frederick, they're moving to Urbana and farther out. And so that actually resonated a lot, not just with people who had trouble living in Gaithersburg, but people who certainly had the means to live in Gaithersburg, but their families didn't, were facing the other challenges. So the other questions I have are really about how do we operationalize this? Are we going to, now that we've moved the office or this division into the planning department, are we, I think we're going to go back and look at the link to community services in terms of a housing authority or housing commission to monitor this. I don't think we want the county operating some of these things and managing these programs for us. I think we're going to have to, so, you know, there's an additional cost there, and whether that comes out of the operating budget or whether we look to this Housing Initiative Fund to do that. But anyway, going back to stakeholders, so it's not just the current residents and future residents, it's also people who are renters, prospective renters, and in fact, the developers are pretty important. So I think there are a lot of ideas that, these five ideas, I think we can actually get quite a bit of input from the community, both in terms of our, those that we're working with in terms of economic development. And certainly, the major employers are interested in having affordable housing for their employees in a community like Gaithersburg. So lots of good ideas here, I'm very pleased to see what you've laid out and the options that we have. I think we have some things that we can start right away and some other things that deserve some study, but I wish we had more than 2.1 million dollars. So I, you know, I actually oppose the buyout from the Crown Developers for this. But... But I can see now how we can make it work a little bit better. I'd still like to see more affordable units in Crown that they bought out of, but that, that has to do with inventory. So, we got to find another way to take care of inventory and where else we put it. So, thank you. That's, those are my comments.
So, I would just like to respond to one point that Mike and Ryan made about the rental assistance sort of grant program. So, what we're really envisioning is that we would support families who are already on another waiting list. So, when you talk about sustainability, that's how we envision having sustainability because our program would just last long enough to get them off the waiting list and into the other Montgomery County or other rental assist, long-term rental assistance program.
So, it's a short-term bridge. I think you mentioned six to 12 months in your, in your presentation.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do struggle with that because, I mean, as I said, I think we do need to focus on renters as well. But Judd makes the point that, you know, as we're talking about bang for our buck in terms of inventory, you know, which of these programs is going to create more inventory or create more long-term stability for affordable housing versus, you know, the kinds of short-term or emergency assistance, which are also important, but maybe in a different way than this strategic discussion about long-term inventory creation.
And we do see that rental assistance program as sort of a pilot program over two years. So, assuming we put $100,000 in each of two years, that doesn't really reduce the housing initiative fund significantly?
Right, right.
All right. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak on this topic? Please come on up. Please state your name and we ask that you keep your comments, no more than three minutes. Please, Darlene.
All right. Darlene Belzegorelli from Gaithersburg, from this side town. So, a lot of information. I just have one, a couple of questions. With all this development, are we going to have more, because there's so many apartments on this side of Gaithersburg. And I know this new thing going up at the Y site is affordable housing or is it Section 8 housing where it's mostly vouchers and all the people that's going to live in there are on vouchers because that's different from affordable, what I can afford. And one of the reasons why my daughter doesn't live in this city is that she can't afford to live here. So, I'm with the folks who are moving out of Gaithersburg so that their kids can live close to them. So, my biggest question, I have an issue with that, that construction over there. The other thing I had a problem with is when the Kintland Foundation came here about the wall coming down and we kind of turned them down on supporting them with the construction because they needed $2 million. But if you can't support that kind of thing from a community, then why would you give loans to a community to resolve their, their not paying their condo fees? It seems like it's, you're helping one group but not helping the other. Those are my two comments. Now, I'm not, nowhere near an expert and all this stuff, but that's my gut reaction to all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. Louise, do you want to answer either or both?
Well, to the first question about, I think it's called the Gateway Old Town, the former Y site.
We all know it's the Y site apartments.
Oh, yeah, great. There will be 199 units. They're all tax credit units. They're affordable to households at 60% of area median. And as I said earlier, 60% of AMI for this area is about $65,000. I don't know at this point what the rents are going to be, but the city has no monitoring responsibilities. It's not through the city and it's, although certainly housing tours vouchers can be used at the property because in Montgomery County it's illegal not to do so. It's not a Section 8 property.
Great.
So, vouchers can be used for almost any rental property, right?
Yeah, that's right.
It's not designated as a voucher zone.
Exactly, that's right. And I really, the only thing I can say about her point about the, the Kintlands, well, I think she said $2 million, is that we do have $2 million, but as you say, we're not going to spend that $2 million in the next year or even two years. You know, we really see, I mean, I sort of did a, a quick mathematical calculation that if you fund, if you agree to fund all the programs and assuming that there would be no development partnerships in the first year, in the first year, we would spend about $400,000. So, that's not, that would still leave us about $1.7 million going into FY '18. If in FY '18, we make sort of a loan to a community developer, let's say a minimum of $250,000, that would leave us with $1 million going into FY '19. So, you know, certainly we're not going to, and by, as you know, by 2020, we're going to get $1 million back from MHP and start repaying the GAAP loans to you.
Right. So, we'll be starting to get additional income or return, return principal in the long term. I mean, it would be great, I think, in a perfect world, at some point, you know, the fund just becomes self, the entire fund becomes self-sustaining. And as we're, you know, it's just sort of a revolving door. As we're giving out loans, we're getting money back from other loans.
Right.
And I know that's the hope. I don't think we're there yet, but it's going to, it's going to take a while to get there. But I think it's a possibility. And so, if it's $2 million and you're just spending it down over five years until it's gone versus $2 million, it's going to go up a little bit, down a little bit, but basically stay there forever, that's a very different kind of resource that you have to assist the, the folks in the city.
Yep. Do we have any other speakers? Seeing none, okay. All right. Well, thank you all for the presentation. So, what, what's next? When, when will we see you guys again on this topic?
I was, I was just going to ask you that same question. If I could just recap, what, I guess what I'm hearing is, is that, that we have some consensus on three of the ideas. And, and I think those three ideas are, are ones that are fairly easily, you know, put on our list and we're going to start, you know, looking at how to, how to do that. And so, as far as increasing the GAAP funds, we'll look and talk with, with the attorney's office and, and make sure that we're on solid legal footing, talk about how, how that would be done, what areas we would be talking about. I think that could be handled in a, in a memo back to council as far as how, how we're going to do that and what we found out. The loans to developers, I, I think the best way forward on that is, is to, for us to be thinking about it and, and to come with you if we, if we feel like there's an opportunity to, to, you know, implement such a, a program. And that may be, you know, a year off and maybe tomorrow, who knows, you know, as far as, you know, but we'll start keeping that in the back of our mind as we meet with these developers and, and talk with folks about new projects.
I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say that, that at least the people at the DAS currently, if we found an opportunity that was like a high-value opportunity that would help us distribute affordable units, whether rental, whether home, whether owner-occupied, geographically in other places from where they currently are clustered, I think we'd all, I think we're there if, if we can find a good opportunity for it, if such exists.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the question is, you know, from a tactical perspective, are we going to have staff going out and, and advertising to the, you know, community developer community that, hey, we've got a bunch of money here and we're looking to spend it so, or looking to loan it, so come in and, you know, give us some programs, give us some, some development proposals versus kind of laying low and waiting for someone else to come out from the community and
And that's a fair point, too.
And offer an idea to us. If they don't know that we have the loan possibility there, you know, that may discourage some developers, community developers from coming to us in the first place.
I think, you know, Mr. Lannigan is here as well and, and listening to this. And I think between their, the economic development, you know, division and, and ours, you know, we're, we're in these conversations, we're identifying these high-priced items, we're, we're talking with them about what their funding sources are and who their partners are. And I think, you know, we'll be able to identify, you know, opportunities and, and also identify things that, you know, what we've envisioned with this is that we would spend money on things that in, at their core would be beneficial to the city, even above and beyond the affordable housing, you know, wins that we might get from it. And that's where we, we put down as far as infrastructure, as far as undergrounding utilities or something like that, that, you know, you know, we're going to get some affordable housing benefit, but we're also going to get some, some residual benefit off of it. So, I, I think we'll start, you know, just inserting that into conversations and looking for, you know, for ways that that might, might work. And then, if we get a, a bite, bring it to you folks as far as an idea and, and see how, how it goes from there. The other one that I heard, and I think we can start digging into and seeing exactly, you know, how we would put it together and, and who might be interested is the, is the loans to, or the grants to the common ownership communities. And I think that again could be probably handled in a, in a memo to you, laying out the, the details and what we would propose for the first year and, and maybe just get some feedback that way. I don't, I don't see that those three items would take another work session or something like that. I don't know that that would, that would be beneficial. As far as the other two items, I guess we're open to bring back more information if you'd like that or if you
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think you should give up on those. And I don't think anybody up here is saying, definitely do these three, don't do those two. But I think in terms of prioritization, that's, you know, but
I, and, and I, I think we're, in terms of the energy efficiency sort of stuff, it may, there may be opportunities on, with a different pot of, of budgetary money.
Right. So, don't give up on the idea and maybe there's a way staff can come back to us with some reincarnation of that idea. I don't know. I'll leave it to you all to think about it. But, you know, obviously, this is something that has been explored through the PACE loan program and the HELP loan programs from Montgomery County. And there are legal and financing complications, but it's, you know, it's certainly worthwhile. It, you know, not only is good for the environment, which is a key strategic priority of the city and energy efficiency, but it's good for the cash flow of the people who live in those homes where, you know, it would cost less to pay for utilities and, and other things. So, I mean, it's a great idea. I, I, so I don't want you to walk away thinking that we, we don't like it as an idea. I think Judd is right. It's just, seems to me that it's something that fits in a different place in our plans and maybe in our budget from something as sort of discreet as the housing initiatives fund.
Remember, we, the, the Habitat was, was doing a lot of those kinds of renovations and repairs and upgrades for, for homeowners at a certain income level. I think they're, you know, they're one of our stakeholders as well. You know, the idea that, I mean, that was my whole point in talking about stakeholders, developers that we might work with or interested in the city, whether they're somebody like MHP or somebody that, that does something else, then, you know, we need to look to them and find out, you know, the kind of things that might work for them, that might actually have worked for them in other communities besides Gaithersburg. So, the committee I chaired at the NLC, the Energy, Environment, Natural Resources Committee also looked at a lot of other programs, low-income heating assistance, the air conditioning assistance, that kind of stuff. So, there are grant programs out there that, that can help with, with some of these as well. And there are corporate entities as well that are, that are actually interested, you know, that, that have partnered with organizations like Habitat to, to do some of these things. So, I think, but I think there's lots of opportunities, lots of good ideas, and there's no reason we can't begin to implement this. I think the payoffs are pretty immediate, but the, I think the number one thing, we want to have a sustained impact with whatever we do. So, I think we're just starting to see that with our initial housing, affordable housing ordinance that's 10 years old now. We're starting to bear fruit there. So, that's what we want to see.
So, with respect to the rental assistance program, I'm not quite ready to give up on that. So, would a memo to you sort of outlining, you know, how many people are on waiting lists, you know, sort of what the waiting lists are, where the funds, other funds are coming through, would that be helpful in giving you more confidence or a greater comfort level in at least starting that as some kind of a pilot program?
I would support starting it as some kind of a pilot program. I don't know what my colleagues stand, but especially since you pointed out, Louise, at the end, at the end of your presentation, that relatively speaking, it's not going to be a huge expense compared to some of the other programs and compared to the full amount of funds in the, in the pot of money for the HIF. You know, I think it's something that we can try for a year or six months or whatever and see how it goes and see if we're able to help a lot of people and then transition them into long-term assistance with the county pretty easily. And if it doesn't work that well or if it's helping folks, but it's not really creating long-term contribution to affordable housing stock in that sense, then we can reevaluate it in six months or a year.
Tony, what were you going to say?
That was actually the point I wanted to make because it, I think, I think from my, my perspective as one of sustainability of the fund in that, you know, the overarching goal here is to, you know, increase the quality of the stock, both in rental and, and ownership. So, I think we owe you some, possibly some simulations that say, you know, if, if we did, you know, a half million dollar loan to a developer and a bunch of GAAP loans, you know, what's the end result of that? And then change those variables and what's the end, end result of that, which I think is pretty easily done.
Okay.
Just simulation models. But they, they would say, this is the end result of spending a million dollars this way and this is the end result of spending, spending it that way. And that, that might help guide the allocations among the different
Yeah. We're all saying the same thing. I mean, bang for the buck is what we're looking for here because we have a nice fund, but it's a limited fund. And, you know, if one type of program is going to yield four affordable housing units and another type of program is going to yield 30 affordable housing units, we want to go with the second one, you know?
Right. And, and we don't want to put in the position where we've, we've been paying people's rent for a couple of years and all of a sudden an opportunity comes up and they went to choose between paying this person's rent, who's become dependent upon us. And I think Louise's model is, avoids that. Or removing a blight from the community of something, you know, where we, exactly where we want to do it.
The owners of those rental probably, properties, we have to do something as well to encourage them to continue to reinvest in their properties. But that's, you know, that's also this cycle that we've talked about is that reinvest, reinvesting in a property often leads to redevelopment that displaces people who have trouble finding those affordable units in the first place. So, we have to think about how, how to best do that.
But, but we have had a few success stories on that front.
We have, we have. So, but
Well, thanks for a great conversation. And I think we have, you guys have some good guidance here. So, we appreciate everyone being with us. The next regular meeting of the mayor and city council is next week on July 18, 7:30 PM right here. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.